It's now five thirty AM, time for the McCook City Council meeting to begin. Roll call shows all council members are here and there is a copy of the Open Meetings Act. It's posted the entryway there to the council chambers and is available for public review. We'll have the indication with Jeanne Lee.
Okay, joy break. Our heaven father, we thank you for this day, we thank you for everything that you've given to us, Lord. Tonight, Lord, we ask that your presence be felt, guided and directed to help us to make the right decisions for the citizens of McCook. Lord, you have been most gracious, we thank you for the recent rains. Lord, thank you so much for those, we ask all this in your name and for your glory, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any announcements or recognitions tonight?
I think we do, Chief Harpman?
I got just some handouts here. McCook Fire Department was fortunate enough to be one of about twenty services in Nebraska to receive funding for a system that's in the back wire ambulance, it consists of a tablet that's mounted in the back, two speakers and a microphone, and it's a system called A-Bell, and that's what I'm handing out here is the information on that. And basically what this does is it provides us with just another tool in our toolbox that allows us to make a phone call and have instant contact with a board certified emergency physician versus paramedics that are able to see with the tablet so that when we're providing treatment for our patients, if we have questions, if we have past casualties, if we have different things like that going on, or a lot of ambulances out, we can dial them up. It's just momentarily they're on, they're on the iPad, they're looking at us and they can guide us through treatment. They can contact the hospital for us, they can arrange the helicopters for us, they can do a lot of things. These are things that we already do to a certain extent, but it's just like I said, it's just another tool that allows us to do this. This is part of an initiative that the state has put together and it's funded through the CDC. I think the funding amount is about 1.3 million nationally. Our local funding for the first year, this is about a ninety-five thousand dollar project, a program in our ambulance that provides this service for the first year. So the state's trying to arrange funding for years after this. If they don't have it, we'll probably remove it because it's, you know, it's a good service. I don't see us using it a lot, but it is something that's out there. Like I said, it's just another tool in the toolbox that we can use at times when we're busy, we have a lot of people out, we have a lot of things going on, so. Good project, like I said, we were one of twenty selected, so we take pride in fact that this is just going to help us to continue to provide that care as a side.
Thank you, wow. Any other announcements?
That's it.
We'll move on to the consent agendas approved on one motion. Any item listed on the consent agenda may, by the request of any single council member or public attendance, be considered as a separate item under the regular agenda. Do we have anything to pull from the consent agenda?
Don't you honor them?
Any staff, anybody in the public want to pull anything?
On the consent agenda, I make a motion to accept items A through K.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second to accept items A through K. All those in favor vote yea, post yea. My mouse missed me. Five votes cash J, no votes cast stay. Okay, we'll move on to the regular agenda, update regarding the swimming pool projects and Ballmoren project.
We had our regular progress being with Carruthers and Landford Merson on May sixteenth here in the council chambers to discuss the progress of the swimming pool. I think a lot of people probably had a chance to see how things are moving over at the swimming pool. It's really exciting to see everything move forward as quickly as it is right now. I know that we're still hoping for an opening date in July, beginning of July. We haven't had any indication at this time that there's going to be a change order request. So that's a good thing. For this next progress period, this was as of May sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, so some of these things have been done. But Carruthers was in the process of continuing to perform for the pool deck. They were going to install their A section rules, which I think that's been done. We've got slide installations occurred and then we'll see fencing. I don't know, did they complete all the fencing, how they could do everything yet, so. And then painting is going to be scheduled here soon, so you're going to see them painting the actual swimming pool. We're off the line, I do it and said, but that we don't hear that here the next week or so. And then electrical and plumbing will be finalized as well too. So we talked about contingency where we're at. There's some things that we purchased here recently with our contingency funds. Purchased two pool vacuum systems and also two sets of blockers. We've been discussing as far as the sound system, I've spoken with Trevor Taylor at DK to discuss and I know that he's in the process of looking at different options. With respect to other items, we've been trying to make the conversation with respect to colors, painting. I know we had a meeting this last week to talk about block, there is an imperfection with the block, so we're looking at different options and trying to figure out how to make sure that the block has that nice glossy look to it. So we've got a plan moving forward, we're going to test on some blocks that won't be seen, it'll be in storage room and see how that takes. But we should be able to address that problem. As far as some additional features that we've been working on, we've been looking at tubes for the lazy river, also lounge chairs, and I think that we have ordered or had Carruthers order the chairs and tubes of our choice. And then our next pool meeting is going to be on June tenth at three thirty PM. Trying to think of anything else, can't think of anything off the top of my head.
I know they're bored, or they're trenched, they're trenched in the electrical all weekend, main service.
Do we have an approximate opening date, how many o'clock is that? Do they have an idea?
Beginning of July.
Yeah, beginning of July is still an issue.
Do we have lifeguards hired?
We've got lifeguards, some that have gone through training, there'll be another session of training as well too. So we're doing our best at track, I'm out there recruiting, I know Tara's out there recruiting, we're all recruiting. So if you have some people that you might think might be good lifeguards, recruit them as well too. There may be some people too in the community that would like to volunteer, figure out the lifeguard, they're not going to ask these in the pool, so.
Is there any, some ice cream there? Is there any thoughts about having an extended pool season? We're not going to start until, say, first week of July, let's pick a date.
The problem is, the problem is we lose our lifeguards on sports.
True, true, that's why I say, is there any consideration of how?
It'd be difficult to do.
Okay, everybody?
We lose lifeguards, and I understand, but they're moving as fast as they can and we're trying to move as quickly as possible. But we have to be realistic, so that's why, you know, when they made the change order, the initial change order to July, they're working at breakneck speed to try to get everything done. But we have to be able to run and operate the pool, and I don't plan on getting my speed on going up there in lifeguarding till August. I know, that's a black hole too, so.
I just wouldn't be a little disappointed in the six week pool season, honestly, with all the buildup we've had, the money we're spending, and I know, I know there's all sorts of factors, I'm not trying to be that guy. But at the same point, if there's anyway, somehow, some way.
We got many years to look forward.
We can extend it, I know.
Jerry, Jerry, it seriously comes down to lifeguards. We could extend it for as long as the weather is good, as long as we have lifeguards. That's what it boils down to.
We have to have nine, maybe not nine guards, we could probably modify the formatting, but with the way that it is constructed and the mandates from the state, we have to have nine guards for helping it up at the.
Forward heat performance.
Yeah.
And the Williams State does the training for that, or?
Yeah, they do, it's always correct, yeah.
So just contact them?
Yep, contact them.
Okay, anything else? Okay, let's go on to items B.
Oh, well, I was going to mention the ballpark too.
Okay, okay.
So we are communicating with John Walters. Actually today, Kyle, Nathaniel and I worked on the first draft of the purchase agreement, descended Mr. Walters. Our plan is to hopefully bring the purchase agreement back to the council at the next council meeting. If not the next council meeting, it'll be the first meeting in July. And then we'd like to close in August on that land. Once we close on that land, then we can start moving forward with the planning aspect. But we want to get that figured beforehand. We have had discussion with DA Davidson regarding initial financing, we've talked about anticipation notes. As mentioned, the special meeting we had a week or two ago. We are looking at funding a portion of that purchase with the sales tax proceeds from the, or the ballot, the election that we had in November of twenty twenty-two. And then we've identified other funds in the general fund that I'd pay for the rest of that. So, but we need to have some money so that we, we need to have that upfront money and then we can go ahead and call that over a period or a short period, so that way we're getting it as quickly as possible. But you have to have those upfront dollars in order to be able to set the ball in motion, so. I think that's, I can't think of anything else as far as the ballpark. Like I said, purchase agreement should be going back to the national year shortly, so. I think there's going to be an ordinance on the seventeenth that, is that correctly? Is it the seventeenth that we're talking about?
Yes.
So DA Davidson is going to come out here for the anticipation of ordinance, so.
Okay, discussion regarding the twenty twenty-four city of McCook decision.
No, I don't know if we can pull that up.
Two hundred and sixty-five pages?
Yeah, there are a lot of pages, I was going to have to print it off, but I think we can go ahead at least.
Wow.
Yes, yes, so back.
Did you get it all changed?
Yep, here it is.
There it is, you got yours, okay.
Yeah. And it's a lot of numbers, it's broken into a couple of different categories. We looked at things in a couple of different ways. We looked at things from a raise standpoint like we've done in the past. We've also looked at things from a market analysis standpoint, trying to figure out how we can try to make sure that we keep the employees that we have, but then also be attractive to potential employees. One of the things that we've noticed here recently, and I'm guessing probably everybody's experienced this, but you can ask Pat or Kyle or our other department heads, I know Kevin and Mark have experienced some of these things. And I'm sure Beth and Joey have as well too. Trying to fill vacancies has been extremely difficult. And part of the reason I think that might be the case is because people, when they come to us, they say, okay, well, this is the number. For me to leave this job, this is where I need to be. And because of the way that we are situated and the requirements that we have, it makes it very difficult to do that. We don't have a lot of leeway to make adjustments. The city of McCook and all political subdivisions, political entities that are public in nature, we all are subject to the jurisdiction of the Commission for Industrial Relations. The CIR is an oversight commission that assures that municipalities, in our case, it might be something else depending on what kind of local subdivision we're discussing, but it assures, in our case, that municipalities that are similar to one another have similar wages. And so they take the array approach and what will be included in the array will be communities that are in close proximity, close, that might be, you know, Beatrice or Creed or those areas. Scotts Bluff is another one. But there are towns that are twice our size or half our size, so those are the communities that we compare to. And they will look and see where we're at compared to the other communities, and if there's a labor dispute, then it is tried by the CIR and they'll say, okay, McCook, Nebraska, you have to be ninety-eight to hundred-two percent of these communities that have been selected as your contemporaries. And so included in that also is your benefit package, so the benefit package is also included in the wage study that's been forwarded to the council. And based upon that, then you kind of see where you're located and try to make sure that you can be the best and possible candidate somewhere in the middle. And then you want to make sure that you continuously adjust, because if you don't adjust, then you get behind and then you're doing the exact same thing later on. So we did a wage study back in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. At the time that we did that wage study, there were adjustments that were made, but the adjustments got us to the floor for a number of the positions. It didn't actually get everybody to where they should have been located on their wage range. So as opposed to say, okay, you know what, you've been here for four years and because of that you should be located maybe here in the middle of the wage scale. If they were low, we'd get them to the very floor. If they were at the floor or above that, we made no adjustment. And so you can see, because of that, we're just basically bringing them up to the minimum and not actually getting them above and beyond that starting point. The problem that you have then is everybody else that makes adjustments and considering the low level that we were already at, when the other towns make adjustments, we get that much further behind. So at this point in time, you know, we are behind. And if you look at where we're at, not all positions, but for a number of our positions, you know, there are increases that need to be made in order to make sure that we are where we're supposed to be on that scale. So that's what we're working on right now. We're trying to determine exactly what that number is going to be. Like I said, we did a market analysis and also an array analysis. The market analysis included some other communities that are competitors of ours. I always think about the police department trying to compete for police officers. And some of the communities I know that we've lost, police officers too, are North Flat, Lincoln. Lincoln's much bigger than us, we don't have them, we talked about Cardy, talked about Hastings. Trying to determine whether or not that might be a way to look at it. I'm not sure we're going to be able to do a market analysis approach, we was talking about that today, Tara and I were talking about that. Those communities have resources and they're compared to other towns that are dissimilar from us. Like I said, they can go through the same process, they would be, you know, compared to towns that are twice their size or half their size for an array comparison, so. But I wanted to see exactly what we were competing with, like I said, I know that we've lost people to other communities and what does that mean for us? The one thing that we, I know people say, and I know I mentioned this, the special meeting that we had. You know, I know people say run cities or municipalities or government like a business, but it's hard to do when we have a different set of rules that we have to play by. The other thing that we struggle with is we can't make widgets. There is no other way for us to raise the revenue to provide the services that people expect in their community. And so when you start talking about ways to try to make that differential up, it's usually going to be either through sales, tax, property tax, whatever the case may be. Now, we talked about other fees, that's one of the reasons why we talked about the games of skill. You know, trying to come up with other avenues, we're going to be talking about an NPPD potential rate increase. I know we talked about occupation taxes before, there are things that we can do on the occupation tax side that might be a gener, a revenue generator. And those are all things we can look at. But at the end of the day, we can't build more widgets and sell those widgets and take that new profit and reinvest it in employees. We're very limited with the way that we're able to, you know, generate additional funds. Really the best way to do that is to increase the size of the pie. So when we start talking about like the ballpark project and the importance of that, and you start talking about a hundred thirty acres of developable ground, whether it's residential or mixed use, whatever the case may be, you add that property tax, hopefully you bring more people in, new businesses, new sales tax. That's how you're going to end up defraying some of those costs. But it's important to note that without that kind of growth, without bringing in that kind of business or residential properties, new people, you're always going to be in that same position because you're limited with which, where to look for those dollars and resources to continue to operate the way that we have. McCook is unique, I've said this before, we've got a full-time fire department. There are a lot of towns our size that do, but that's the, this is a knock on heart, but that's, that makes us unique. And so we, and I'm glad we've got that, that's a good thing for our community. We need to, I think there are a lot of people that feel comforted knowing that we've got a full-time fire department, but that's going to be ten people, or maybe not ten, but you know, around eight people that we employ that other communities don't. We've got a senior center that's fantastic, but not everybody else has a senior center the way, set up the way that we do, where we run that. When I look at that wage study, Beth, I can't think of very many other weights or other senior centers that are, Lexington maybe? And that's about it, I think. And that's something that other councils have taken on as an obligation and something that I'm thinking that this council wants to continue with, but that's an obligation that we've undertaken. Dispatch, there are very few communities, municipalities that operate dispatch, usually it's going to be the county. We do that. We've got eight employees, I think, seven or eight, I think nine-one-one coordinator and the dispatchers.
Right.
Yeah, and so that's additional employees that we have that others don't have. Now, in other areas, we may not have as many employees, or we, you know, we don't have a municipal golf course. I know Tara and I have talked about that, Seward runs their golf course. And so that's something that Seward has that we don't have. But we've prioritized things over a period of time. If we have to start, if, if, if we don't start going in this direction as far as looking at, you know, ways to make sure we can bring people in or whatever the case may be, I don't know how we're going to be able to continue to offer the services that we currently have. I just don't know how we're going to do that. I know that, I've talked to Pat and Kyle all the time, because they're in the office right next to me and I hear them and the difficulties they have trying to attract people. Today, Kyle and I were talking about that. It is hard for us to get people to come here to work at the city of McCook. It's a great job, you know, the benefits are fantastic, the people are great to work with. But Pat, the most recent job application or the job advertisement that you ran, how many applicants did you have for that position?
Five, I think, five or six.
And as far as?
They all make more than what we can offer. And the person that we're replacing left for more money, so.
And Kyle, your experience has been somewhat the same?
We had two the last time we had a price.
Kevin, what's your experience been on the police department side?
One, just one. I don't want to give anybody.
And so somehow we got to figure out how to address that, and I think wages probably is the best way to do that. Plus, like I said, I mean, it's incumbent on us because we know that if we end up building on the CIR, we're going to have to make changes, but we won't be, it won't be voluntary, it will be voluntold. And so I think that it's important for us to focus on that this year. I've already told the department heads, we're not really looking at capital improvements. I think that we really need to focus on wages and figure out how do we get in line with the other communities that we have in our right. Like I said, in some cases, we are, we're right where we need to be, in some cases, we're higher. It's all math, I mean, all this is just formulaic, so there's nothing in here that is difficult, tricky, anything like that. It's just the rules and we got to make sure that we're aligned by the rules. So I don't know if I have anything else to add, Tara's been doing the majority of the work on it. Tara, what are your thoughts?
Going through it, there's very few we're at where we should be and it is a big increase compared to the other communities around here. So I can definitely see where the difficulties is that we're having. Matter of trying to figure out how to balance it.
We'll be talking about this more during the budget season, but I want people to understand we're, I think, about as low as you possibly can get for a community our size on a levy. You know, we're at thirty-three cents right now. Thirty-three, thirty-four. And, and other, other communities are lower than us, Cardy's lower, Wilt, that is a regional hub. You know, so the sales tax they bring in allows them to keep their levy pretty low. Scotts Bluff's the same, Norfolk is the same. You know, they're able, because of their size and what they have to offer, they can kind of keep that levy lower. York had a very low levy for a long time and all of a sudden they realized, holy cow, we have a lot of services that we're offering and they actually doubled their levy, I think it was about two thousand sixteen or seventeen when that occurred. But they were at seventeen cents and realized that it's not going to work, so theirs moved from seventeen to thirty-four cents. And that's not what we're talking about here, but, but it is very, very complicated. The other towns in our area, when you're talking about North Flat, Lexington, Holder, Dolewala, similar to us, maybe a little bit smaller. North Flat's bigger, they're on the interstate, but they're just under forty-five cents. They're all between forty and forty-five cents. McCook's at thirty-three or thirty-four cents. And we kept it like that for as long as we possibly can, and hopefully we can keep it as long as we possibly can. But it's starting to kind of quick, I'm starting to see, there's a reason why we're keeping it at thirty-three cents and I think that part of the issue that we're having is on the wage side, we're low. And it's true, I mean, like I said, it's all in the numbers. And who we compare to, that's where we need to be, at least that middle point, that ninety-eight to hundred-two percent. And we are at that ninety-eight to hundred-two percent, that will leave us subject to a CIR challenge. Not saying that that's going to happen, but that's in the back of your mind, that's how you have to look at it, that's how you have to think about it.
What is CIR?
The Commission for Industrial Relations.
Okay, any other questions, council? Okay. Council comments, does anybody have any comments?
There was an article in the World Herald today about the plane crash that occurred south of the airport. It was a surviving doctor and he was just, wanted to compliment the McCook Fire Department. I believe Kyle, you had city staff that responded to, didn't you?
Yes.
He wanted to compliment the McCook Community Hospital and then I think he was transported to Carney. And he wanted to come. Basically, I think you're saying, wasn't he marked that he's alive today because of what you guys did? But he was very appreciative, and so I just wanna say thank you for what you've done, it's awesome.
We got that same article and we shared it upstairs this morning, so.
Congratulations.
Okay, anything else, council? Okay, an executive session may be held upon the majority vote of the council for the protection of public interest for a strategy session with respect to collective bargaining, the paternal organ, Order of Police Law Fifty-seven.
And we're going to executive session for the protection of public interest for a strategy session with respect to collective bargaining, the paternal order of police law fifty-seven and five.